Good evening, everyone. Just for the record, I want to make sure I state that our city clerk, Adrian Brightfelder, is excused for this evening, so we have an acting city clerk in our assistant city manager, Corey Burbach. So, Ms. Burbach, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the city council to be held on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic federal building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the city council.
Good evening, and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for March 18th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input actions during the live meeting include the following. In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and post it on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat option. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the city council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the city clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Council members Farber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Resnick?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Sprank?
Here.
Wethel?
Here.
City manager Van Milligan?
Here.
City attorney Blumma?
Here.
Mayor Kavanaugh, I'll turn it over to you for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Corey. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And our first proclamation this evening is for AmeriCorps Week.
Okay, and I believe we have, my list here says Sarah Burna, Anne Marie Greenwood, and Jessica Andershow here to present on this proclamation. Did I get the names right? Did I? Nailed it. All right, thank you. And if you'd like to say a few words before I read the proclamation, feel free.
I'll go first. I would just like to say, on behalf of existing and former AmeriCorps members, how grateful we are for you to take this, or to make this proclamation. Your support is very beneficial for our programs, and of course, by extension, our community.
Yes, I would just like to say thank you for your support, and it makes a really great impact on our community, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm with the AmeriCorps program, Jessica with the Green Iowa, and then Anne Marie with supporting all AmeriCorps programs. I'd just like to say, reiterate the thank you and the appreciation for the support. Our AmeriCorps members are serving boots on the ground. They are working with people to help be energy efficient. They're working with people to bridge a gap when it comes to social-emotional foundations. And where we are in post-COVID world, that has become a necessity for some educators and schools, and they're the ones doing the work, the hard work every day, and we're here to support them and to thank you for your support for that.
Well, Sarah, Anne Marie, and Jessica, thank you very much for being here to accept the proclamation and for everything you do with AmeriCorps. It's an incredible program. It's such a necessary program for cities the size of Dubuque, and you do such incredible work on an annual basis, so thank you very much for doing that for our community. Well, City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and has the unique ability to bring people of all backgrounds together in common cause, and throughout our history, residents have stepped up to meet our most pressing challenges of the day by volunteering in their communities. And whereas the City of Dubuque is a proud sponsor of members of diverse ages and backgrounds serving with the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program, who provide educational support to our youth and mentoring to at-risk teens, AmeriCorps seniors who empower our seniors to live independently, and Green Iowa AmeriCorps who engage and educate our community to become climate resilient. And whereas AmeriCorps enriches the lives of its members, building habits that create active participants in civic matters affecting their communities long after their service terms are completed. And whereas AmeriCorps members demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas AmeriCorps programs bring people together across race, age, and zip code to address critical issues facing the country, forge relationships, and cultivate mutual respect, and help build resilient and thriving communities. And whereas through their service, AmeriCorps members strengthen the lives of their families, communities, and the City of Dubuque as a whole. And whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of the more than 1.25 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and their community partners, and to encourage more Americans to follow in their footsteps in service. Now, therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 10th through the 16th of March, 2024, as AmeriCorps Week in the City of Dubuque, and urge our community to thank AmeriCorps members and alumni for their service and to find their own ways to give back to their communities. Come on up. All right. It's a picture. Oh, picture time.
I will add, we celebrate AmeriCorps Week.
Excellent. Well, thanks for bringing cupcakes, Sarah. No, I'm just kidding. That's excellent. Thank you. All right, Corey.
All right, our second proclamation this evening is Honeybee Day.
All right. Good friend H.R. Cook is here with us today. And H.R., I know you have something to say before I read this proclamation.
So, on behalf of the Swiss Valley Bee Club and the Iowa honey producers, we thank you very much for this proclamation. This is our third year of doing the proclamation, and each year, because of this attention that we received this evening, we always end up getting a few phone calls regarding people who want to become beekeepers. And it should be noted that Dubuque was one of the largest, one of the larger cities that has allowed urban beekeeping, where you can keep bees inside the city limits. So we have over 50 beekeepers inside the city limits that are currently raising these wonderful insects. This proclamation this evening will be traveling with me tomorrow. This is Iowa Agricultural Appreciation Week. We will be attending a dinner of the agricultural leaders. I don't know why they invited me, I'm not one of them, but this proclamation will be on display because of the Iowa Honey Producers Association and the product of honey which is produced inside of, inside the state of Iowa. But more importantly, those that wish to consume honey, please, there are many local honey producers here in the community that will be happy to sell you some of their product and the hard work of the bees. I'm with Country View Honey, but I'm just one of, one of many that are at the local stores and establishments and are on the web for your sale. We have about 85 members now with the Swiss Valley Bee Club, so we're one of the larger clubs in the state of Iowa.
That's great. Well, thank you very much, H.R. I learned a lot right there, so I appreciate you coming and informing us.
Well, one more fun fact.
Yeah.
Beekeeping is one of the fastest-growing hobbies of men over 50 and of retired couples, more so than even pickleball. So, just thought you should know that.
Well, I'll think about that in a few years when I'm over 50, so thank you very much, H.R. I appreciate you being here to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food we eat, honeybees are vital in production of over 90 crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuming the availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife in all islands. And whereas Iowa's 45,000 or more honeybee hives produce about 4 million pounds of honey valued at over $9 million, and honeybees provide an estimated $92 million of economic value to Iowa crops from their pollination. And whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests and disease, decreasing bee-friendly habitat, variable climate, and pesticide and herbicide pressure. And whereas the City of Dubuque promotes programs such as No-Mo-May, delaying the removal of vital undergrowth of trees and leaves which provide shelter and food to bees and other pollinators, and urge a minimalistic approach to pesticides and herbicides on lawns and ornamental gardens. And whereas the Dubuque community encourages and promotes many types of urban pollination programs with grants, classes, and clubs, it is estimated that there are over 40 urban beekeepers in the City of Dubuque whose bees are pollinating many types of trees, plants, flowers, and other blooming flora throughout the spring, summer, and fall. These beekeepers consume, donate, and sell their honey, thus promoting health and local products. Now, therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, mayor of the City of Dubuque, on behalf of the city council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 27th of March, 2024, as Honeybee Day.
Next, we have consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state that the item you would like to remove, the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through four of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Corey. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion, please? I see no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
We do not.
Okay, thank you, and nothing from the city clerk's office, I'm assuming?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, break, back to the table then, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Next, we have items set for public hearing, and we have one item to be set this evening. That's the Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and CBD LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolution, and set the public hearing for April 1st.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, we have boards and commissions, and we have one application appointment this evening.
All right, thank you. We have the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board. It is one three-year term through January 1st, 2027, and we have one applicant, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that we appoint the eminently qualified Jeff Leonard to repeat performance in the Housing Appeals and Mediation Board.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Jeff Leonard is appointed to the Housing and Appeals and Mediation Board through 2027.
Next, we have public hearings. We have three hearings this evening. The first is request to rezone property at 35 Locust Street from C3 General Commercial to C4 Downtown Commercial.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, which is to be finally passed, be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council members. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is a rezoning of the subject property from C3 General Commercial to C4 Downtown Commercial. And the property in question is comprised of two lots, and it's more popularly known as the Bridge Restaurant site. There is a half a duplex with a zero-lot line location, and then also a vacant small parcel of land that's located adjacent to the property, and then the larger parking lot. So that's the area that we're looking at rezoning from C3 to C4 Downtown Commercial. The applicant is requesting the rezoning with the intention of redeveloping the subject site until a multi-story residential building. It's a mixed-use development with ground floor retail and underground, underground parking. It's kind of a walkout lot as you face towards Locust Street with the intention to have up to 81 units. This came before the zoning advisory commission through a public hearing, and at that public hearing, staff spoke in regards to setback requirements, off-street parking. We talked about that, they've already taken the request of the development review team to look at impacts from the size and scale of the development. And at that public hearing, there's a couple of individuals that get up and spoke. They did not speak in opposition, they had questions, and those questions were directly related to pedestrian access in the downtown with a number of residential units located at the Bridge Restaurant site for this type of development, access to that, and improved safe routes. And then also, another discussion was just in curiosity about parking. The applicant is tonight, they may be able to address a little bit more about the parking, but there are several surface parking lots that are coming along with this property that, and the proposed property owner actually owns two other sites located immediately adjacent to the property and directly across Bissell Lane for those off-street parking requirements. So one question may ask, why the rezoning from C3 General Commercial to C4 when we do allow residential uses above the first floor already? In a C3 district, we have a 20-foot front yard setback, and C3 is typically your highway-oriented development. You're looking at Dodge Street, JFK, where you have higher-speed traffic going across the front door. This is actually accessed by Bissell Lane and a Locust Street connector, and almost like a little residential street. It's not highly accessible, I think that's why residential is a better fit at this location. In order to access this location, if you're coming into the town, you have to go all the way down to Second Street, come up by the cathedral, and come down Beluff Street to even access this point. Multifamily development and trying to create more of that density in our downtown is a component not only of our imagined Dubuque comprehensive plan, but a goal that's been set forth by the city council in order to increase more of our population, and the location is, access to existing utilities and sites with regards to that. The other thing with regards to changing from C3 is that the maximum height in C3 districts is 40 feet, and for a C4 district, the front yard setback changes to a zero foot. It's more of a pedestrian-scale, streetscape-type environment, and that's what the existing Bridge Restaurant is and the adjacent residential properties. And then you also have Mer South and Tap, which is a commercial development on the corner, but it also allows 70 feet in height. So for this development, proposed four stories above the first story, so there will be a height greater than 40 feet. In addition to that, C4 does not require off-street parking. However, the applicant is definitely driven to provide the amount of off-street parking associated with the property, so for residential units above the first floor, it's one parking space for each dwelling unit, and it also depends on what type of commercial development is on the front, on the ground floor level. So however, you're not required to provide that off-street parking. We're encouraging more density in the downtown, and parking's also being supplied throughout the area, but like I said, and it was brought up during the meeting, he will have plenty of surface off-street parking located in the proximity of the property. So, as I mentioned, at that public hearing, two individuals spoke with regards to the request. No one spoke in opposition to the rezoning, and the staff detailed the staff report with a discussion about traffic. As we move forward more with the detailed plans, there'll be a discussion whether or not a traffic study will be required at this location from the impact of the development. But with that, the zoning advisory commission discussed the request, and they found it to be appropriate for the area. It is identified as mixed use in our future land use map, so by a vote of four to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the request, and a simple majority vote is needed for city council to approve the request. And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of a request from Joshua Jansen to rezon property located 35 Locust Street from C3 General Commercial to C4 Downtown Commercial. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Can you come on up? I'll just remind, name and address, please, before you, before you address. Appreciate that.
Josh Jansen, 11368 Rock Grove Court, Dubuque, Iowa, 52001. Wally stole my speech. So the building itself is targeted to pay homage to historic Dubuque. It's going to have a brick-and-stone facade that's visible to the public, so the north, east, and south. On the west side, it'll have a courtyard that'll provide public or community amenity space plus private balcony space, and then on the east, north, and south side, there will be balconies attached to the building as well. The parking totals will be about 110 to 120 parking stalls that'll be provided within the building, targeting about 48. The adjacent lot next to that, 17, and then Zero Bluff Site would provide almost another 50 as well, so we should be, you know, taking care of that. I have, or I look forward to having discussions, doing the traffic study off of Locust Street because I feel with this development, changing that to a one-way traffic would provide twice the amount of public parking and would better support the commercial spaces within the building, being that the residential spaces are being, the parking's provided for.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jess. Appreciate your comments. Any other comments this evening on this particular item? Seeing none here, do we have anyone virtually?
No virtual input.
Thank you very much. Okay, so seeing no more input, back to the table for discussion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I'm excited about this project for a number of reasons, not the least to which the Herzogs are good friends of ours, and we've spent a lot of Friday and Saturday nights in their restaurant over the last decades. Want to make it clear that I would be excited about this project if I'd never met them and never set foot in the place. This is the right thing at the right place at the right time. As Wally's pointed out, it hits square on a number of goals and objectives that this council's had for a long time. It's going to really improve the aesthetics of that welcoming point into the city, and it's going to allow my friends to retire in some comfort that they've earned, so congratulations to all of you. I expect this to pass, I'll certainly be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
If I could ask Wally just one question? When you said there were 81 units, could you explain the opportunity for the income for the variety of residents in? Thank you.
Yeah, so the permitted residential type of uses in that, at that location, a C4 would allow housing with disabilities or the elderly, that would actually be allowed on the first floor of the property. However, the majority of the residential in a C4 district is residential uses or above, and the type of housing could range anything from senior housing to market-rate housing to affordable housing to workforce housing. There hasn't been any ask or any funding request for the development, and sometimes those carry some of those types of uses or types of housing type. So a lot of times you'll see some larger-scale multifamily developments come before you, and it may be an Iowa Finance Authority project where they're getting some low-income housing tax credits for maybe a senior housing or affordable housing. In this case, there hasn't been, there is no request for that at this time, so it can be a variety of multiple uses. I hope it's a mixed-income development, to be honest with you. It's great to see that opportunity for all different professions and the ability, especially in our downtown, the ability for the building to frame our entryway as you come over the Julian Dubuque Bridge. One thing I did mention, this has been reviewed quite a bit with regards to a future bridged improvement project, so that will not be impacted by the location of the proposed development. So I hope I answered your question.
You did, yeah, thank you. I just wasn't sure if it was the, as you called it, the variety of the mixed incomes, so I appreciate that, as I do think the residents of Dubuque and those that want to live and work and play downtown too, so I'm very excited as well. I think it's the right place at the right time, and just really thank you in advance for improving the ambiance and the energy down there. Thank you.
Real quick technical thing, Eric, in the back, could you flip the screens for us, please, so we're not watching ourselves talk up here? Appreciate that, thank you. Just gets a little distracting sometimes on the screen. Okay, Ms. Wethel, I think I saw your hand next to her, please.
Well, as the representative for Ward 4, where your building and development will be, thank you. This is going to create some wonderful, walkable living for our neighborhood, and I'm just thrilled with it. When I learned of it, I thought it was kind of knocking it out of the park, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Well, I'm also in support of this exciting development. I think it's really important to have a mix of housing, and we need all kinds of housing for our community, and as I think Ms. Wethel said, to have some walkable housing, if you want to live and work downtown and recreate downtown, what a great opportunity. And I like to see adding additional density to our downtown. I'm looking forward to seeing it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So as Mr. Jones alluded to, it's a very, you know, highly-visible location. I think it's very important, and I was glad that Mr. Jansen talked about, you know, reminiscent of a historic Dubuque building, which is, I think would be great. So my question is, that this mixed-use building, Wally, what are the, what are the advertising possibilities? Sometimes I see a great, a great building, and yet there's some kind of billboard in front of it or something hung from the top, and, you know, it's a highly-visible. It'd be a great place to put an unsightly advertisement, if you know what I mean. So what, what are the rules as far as that's concerned?
Yeah, so you don't have to worry about that because we do have distances from city-designated historic districts, which the historic district actually ends at the Mer South and Tap and all that, the buildings up front there, so it's too close to have a billboard located on the building. We also have distances from existing billboards. So even though it would be rezoned to C4 where a billboard would be permitted, it does not meet those separation requirements, so a billboard would not even be allowed to be placed on the building.
Great, thank you. This is an exciting project. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is basically a great use of a space that, that has been used to, lovingly used, and I'm happy, looking very forward to seeing this move forward. It's exciting, it's vibrant, it's just a nice rejuvenation of the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you heard it up here. That's basically the direction I think we're going. Yeah, it's, you know, this is one of those places where, I mentioned earlier, as long as I've been around Dubuque, but as long as I've been around Dubuque, I remember the bridge. It's been a part of what Dubuque has been, but it's good to see that we're moving in a direction that's important for the community, too. This idea of housing in a place like this, I think, is a really good one, so I appreciate the fact that we have, that the neighbors are in support as well, and that we're moving in a direction that seems to be working for everybody, that we're moving in a direction that seems to be in keeping with the zoning of the rest of the neighborhood, so it just seems like a very good idea to me, so I'm very happy to vote for it tonight. Okay, we've heard from everyone. The motion on the table here is to receive and file and waive the three readings, so Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Corey, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is a request to amend a planned unit development, or PUD, to allow pet daycare or grooming as a permitted use.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Jones. Wally, please.
Jess, good evening, Mayor and City Council, once again. Wally Warrenmott, Planning Services Director. The public hearing that you're hearing before you tonight is to amend a planned unit development to allow pet daycare and grooming as a permitted use. This site is located on Radford Road at 498, 4,989 to 4997 Radford Court. That is the facility that's located across from Roosevelt Middle School. Uncle Ike's is kind of the larger tenant in there. There's multi-tenant spaces located along the adjacent to that. The applicant is proposing to use one of those spaces for pet daycare and grooming. When we went through this process, it's unique that this PUD has kind of changed over time. It's been amended a couple of times to allow the Pizza Ranch, which is located directly on the far side, on the north side of the property. And then just within the past year, we rezoned that property to permit a multi-story, multifamily housing development located on the middle portion between these, between the subject site and the Pizza Ranch. So the applicant is looking at amending the PUD regulations in order to allow that pet daycare grooming. As you look through the use, it's really kind of a big mix of different types of uses that would be located in what we call our C2 district, which is our neighborhood shopping center district. So if you think of like the Point neighborhood, some of the larger commercial areas kind than the neighborhood areas. But then there's some light industrial uses in there, and then there's some commercial service type uses in there. I just want to point out, one of the uses is animal hospital and clinic. So at an animal hospital and clinic, you can take your dog to, they get boarded, you know, they get looked at, they have overnight boarding, that's all permitted at that location. However, we don't have pet daycare and grooming as a listed permitted use. And it's starting to become more and more popular in addition to doggy daycare or pet daycare. But unfortunately, the way this was written, it's a very specific PUD, that we have to amend the use regulations in order to allow that as a permitted use at that location. The Zoning Advisory Commission held a public hearing. We did notify all property owners within 200 feet of the entire PUD boundary, which is a lot larger than just specifically the site that this, the applicant is looking at placing their business. At that public hearing, the applicant got up and spoke, noted that they're already operating an existing daycare or pet grooming business on Romberg Avenue, and they're growing, they need more space, and they'd like to locate out on Radford Road Court. It came before that Zoning Advisory Commission. No one spoke in opposition to the request. The commission felt that the additional daycare or pet grooming was a permitted use and similar to the animal hospital and clinic at that location. So by a vote of four to zero, the Zoning Advisory Commission recommends that the city council approve the PUD amendment, and a simple majority vote is needed for city council approval to approve the request. And I know that Natalie Haisewinkle, she's the applicant, she's present, to be able to answer any questions if you have of her at this time. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of a request from Natalie Haisewinkle to amend the planned unit development to allow pet daycare or grooming as a permitted use for property located at 4995 Radford Court. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
We do not.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the table for discussion. Ms. Russell.
Well, I know that so many people have pets these days, and they are a very important family member, those pets. So I'm sure that these services are very much needed in our community, and I believe this would be a good addition to the PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And the others? I have to agree, I think it makes sense to me, and it seems like it is in keeping with the rest of the area well enough, that the Zoning Advisory Commission agreed to that. So it makes sense to me, and I look forward to voting for it personally. Any other comments? Not seeing any. So the motion here on the table is to receive and file and waive the three readings. I almost did it, I almost said the wrong name. Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel? Aye. Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Jones. Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel? Aye. Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Motion passes seven zero.
Our third public hearing is State Revolving Fund Loan, Environmental Review, Bipartisan Infrastructure Law and State Revolving Fund, or SRF, Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program and Presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Mike, am I coming to you?
Yes, thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Following the public hearing to review the environmental information document as required for all designated projects receiving assistance from the State Revolving Fund with a finding of no significant impact, Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending city council approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the environmental information document and direct staff to submit the required documentation. Chris Lester will give a brief presentation on the project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you very much, Mike. Well, Chris, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Christopher Lester, I'm the Water Department Director. I was asked tonight to present a brief progress update on the pilot lead service line replacement So I'll talk about the lead service line pilot program, how did we get here? Essentially, the city is moving forward with this unique opportunity and has secured a level of funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law or bill funding to conduct this pilot program. City records show that there are approximately 5,540 city, excuse me, why make this clear, customer-owned lead service lines throughout the city of Dubuque, of which 3,257 meet the criteria using the socioeconomic assessment tool, which was introduced in February of 2023 by the Iowa DNR and the Iowa Finance Authority. As this is a pilot program, the city of Dubuque will be able to assist approximately 585 homes. This phase of the pilot program is 100% voluntary and is open to those residents with a verified drinking water lead service line meeting the socioeconomic guidelines. We have initiated communication with those meeting the criteria and are in the process of identifying and verifying program participants. Got ahead of myself there, sorry. So in Dubuque, the entire service line from water main to building is privately or customer-owned. Replacing these lead pipes require clear communication and coordination with the private landowners. The city of Dubuque pilot program proposes to replace approximately 585 lines over three phases that will take place over several years. Approximately 200 lines replaced in calendar year 2024, 200 lines replaced in calendar year 2025, and the remaining 185 lines replaced by the end of calendar year 2026. The city also intends to initially focus on census tracts and neighborhoods with socioeconomic scores qualifying those replacements for 49% loan forgiveness under the current Iowa SRF financing structure. SRF construction loans for the remaining 51% of lead service line project costs will be offered at 0% interest. Lead service line projects are considered contingent on the project priority list until SRF has received the bill funds and the DNR has approved the project's lead service line replacement, lead service line replacement plan. All right, so where exactly are we at in that process? We have completed project planning and successfully submitted the preliminary engineering report and the intended use plans. The next step is the public hearing on the DNR-prepared environmental impact document, or EID, as part of the environmental review process, which is on this evening's council agenda and why we're here tonight. A public hearing is a requirement of that process. The map on the left of the screen shows the area that Iowa DNR has reviewed to date. Based on their review, they are classifying this environmental assessment as a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie. With a finding of no significant impact, combined with any discussion and public comment, we are requesting the mayor sign the EID, which summarizes the environmental review process to date. It is important to note that it is not necessary that the DNR has all the environmental clearances received before tonight's hearing. So the next process, the next step after tonight, once we, once we complete the public hearing and we submit that lead service line replacement plan to the DNR, essentially they can move forward with the environmental review. As I mentioned earlier, we do, we are continuing, we're going to start working on the in-home verifications so we can finalize a field verified list of 585 homes to submit and finalize the environmental review, environmental review process. Once that's completed, we'll move on to step four, which is project bidding. I'll close with, as we understand this is a pilot program, and we are looking to replace approximately 10% of the known lead service lines in the city of Dubuque. We do plan to remain diligent to seek out additional funding that will support lead service line replacement. And I'm here for any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. We are in a public hearing to, sorry, hang on one second here. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the EID and direct staff to submit the required documentation, and Water Department Director Christopher Lester is making this recommendation. Do we have any, anyone here to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No virtual comments.
Okay. Back to the table for discussion then. Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. This is something that, near and dear to my own heart, my own home has this, still has a lovely lead line that I'm just knocking on wood, that it doesn't break one of these upcoming, very cold winters, because it's over 100 years old. So I'm, and I know many of my other neighbors are concerned about that. I know that with what we do at the water treatment plant, that the lines aren't, aren't, they're not affecting us health-wise, but it's still, it's an infrastructure problem that's just kind of a ticking time bomb, so looking forward to this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So could you give me perhaps an average cost of lead line service replacement, average?
Sure. So for a full lead, lead service line replacement from the main to the house for the preliminary engineering report, we're estimating between $10,000 and $12,000. So it's a significant savings for the customer if they can participate in this program and get that replaced.
So if it's $10,000, the homeowner pays slightly over $5,000, and then the state would pay, you know, 49 something. Is that what you're saying?
Actually, the city is covering the cost of the 51% that is non-forgivable, which is a pretty huge benefit considering that these lines are privately owned.
So we have state, state money and city money supplied to us from the, from the federal government? Is that fair to say?
Go ahead, Mike.
So the, the forgivable component is provided through the state from the federal government. The additional, the 51%, that's also provided by the federal government through the state, but it's only a loan, and the city has to repay the loan. By the regulations of the program, even if the city wanted to assess those costs to the property owner, we would not be allowed to. So it's mandated as part of the program that the city be the one that pays back the 51% that's only a loan.
Thank you. And is it a 10-year loan, five-year loan, adjustable? What are, what are we looking at?
I think the terms can vary, but we do know it's going to be a 0% loan for the length of the loan.
Right. And so we're not going to be charged any interest rate as well, correct? Not only will our homeowners not be charged for the loan, is the city charged for this loan that, to pay back?
We have to pay a service fee, I think it's a half percent a year, I think, to the Iowa Finance Authority for their management of the loan program.
Great, and thank you. So as Mr. Sprank mentioned, we do chemically treat our drinking water, which is supposed to counteract the lead. But, but there have been instances where, you know, he mentioned breakage and those type of things, that it would be, are lead pipes more apt to break than other pipes? Or just the sheer age of some of them is getting to the point where it's, it's best to do this now?
So first I'll address that we do have that optimized corrosion control, which prevents the lead from leaching out of the line. So that's been very successful for us. We don't have a whole lot of instances where we have high lead levels. We, we're part of a sampling plan with the DNR that we test our lead, or test our water for lead, and we've been successful with that program. As far as what lines are more liable to break, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into that. You know, age can play into that, but soil conditions are also significant. You know, we've had lines that are 40 years old that will break just due to corrosive soils and whatnot. So specifically to lead, like I just want to stress, our optimized corrosion control has been very successful in keeping, keeping the lead out of the water. But as you said, the long-term solution, the best solution is going to be replacing lead service lines. So that's what we're doing, is taking advantage of this unique program to replace 585 lines.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Did you say that, that you've already reached out to the people that could qualify, so I don't have to wonder, if I got a letter, I'm, I could participate?
Sure. So that socioeconomic tool that I mentioned, it was able to take census tracts, and it would give them a score based on 10 different factors. And so what we did is we looked at those, and we, we chose the areas that had the highest scoring, reached out to those customers. We have a very good, robust GIS system. You know, we extracted the addresses, mailed them out, those that we had for the first, the first track in Census Track 5, for example, we sent a second letter, a follow-up letter, did some phone calls. Those who wanted to participate are signed up for the program inasmuch as we contacted them to set up in-home verifications where, you know, Danny, Danny is confident that he has a lead service line, Mr. Sprank, excuse me. But someone might have signed up for the program thinking, I may have one, I don't know. So our, our staff in the Water Department's going to go in and verify that. And once they have those verified addresses, they'll be on the program officially, so we know that that's a lead service line being replaced. But yes, you're correct, if you, if you, you'll get a letter if you're in an eligible district, and then it'll be to the homeowner to respond to that letter and say, yes, I want to participate in this program.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So what is the subscription rate so far, if I could ask?
I think right now we're sitting around 500.
That's like eight, eight.
800?
Yeah. Interested parties will be something new that is possible.
Yeah, so.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, Carl Plumley, my distribution supervisor, wonderful staff I have helping me out here, but interest is up to 800 right now. But again, we have to do that in-home verification. That number could decrease significantly once we get into the homes, and maybe it's a copper line that was replaced that the homeowner was not aware of before, prior to they purchased the home. So we expect the number to decrease, which is a wonderful thing, if our records show that it's a lead service line and maybe it's been replaced. So we hope that number does drop. You know, the ultimate goal is to get lead out of, lead service lines out of Dubuque, so.
Thank you very much. And I love the name "Let's Get the Lead Out."
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Just quickly, so if there are more applicants that are qualified and they do have lead pipes, how do you actually choose the winners?
So right now, we're, we're kind of operating on a first-come, first-served basis. We did ask the DNR SRF that same question. The bill funding has no, they don't set any parameters for us, like if we have 800 people that are interested, there's, they don't, they don't give us any measures that we take on how to select. That's something we can do internally here at the city. But right now, I guess we're looking to get those 585 confirmed, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Anyone else? Well, Christopher, thank you very much for this and for your entire staff for the project here. I mean, this is a, this is a big one. And you said something, I just want to make sure I point it out because it is, it struck me in your memo that you wrote. You said the bipartisan infrastructure law, signed by President Biden, which includes $50 billion to the Environmental Protection Agency, to strengthen the nation's drinking water and wastewater systems, the single largest investment in clean water that the federal government has ever made. That's the, that's the time that we're in. And sometimes I think we have to stop and just remember that, that this is one of those moments in history where we're going to have opportunities that we've, we've never seen. And this is one of them.[1738.81] And this is one of them. The fact that we have, I mean, we are a very old city. I'm pretty sure that I have a lead service line to my home, because it's within that age range, and I think a lot of us do. And the fact that we have these opportunities to help people who can't easily afford the ability to get that lead service line replaced right now, I'm just so thankful that we have that opportunity. And I'm thankful that we are choosing, as a city, to move forward in the way that we are, so that we can help people who need it the most, and that we are choosing to be able to create a program like this. So thank you very much for your work, and I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad that we have this chance to even do it at all. And then obviously, the item before us tonight is a kind of an operational one, more than anything else, to make it one more step in the process here, but it was a great discussion to be able to talk about this a little bit more. So seeing no further comments, the motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Next item on the agenda is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there's any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Cory. Do we have any public input this evening? Seeing no one here. Oh, I see one.
I live at 1983 University Avenue. I live right across from the University of Dubuque. And my purpose for being here is, I live in a very high-traffic, very high-density, high-rental area. Most of the homes, I think there's probably only one, maybe two of the homes on the block that I live on, that are privately owned. The rest are rentals, fourplexes, students and everything. And so parking is very bad, because we can only park on one side of university. On the second house off the corner, and if you go around Algonah, you can only park on one side of the street there. So during these snow route things, it's like musical chairs. When the music stops, if you don't have a spot, you're walking a long way. And for me, that's extremely difficult. And what I'm asking for your consideration tonight, I know it's sort of a big deal, but I was granted a handicap spot 13 years ago. And I'm constantly calling the police department for students, for people, just because if I leave, someone parks in my spot, so I have to get law enforcement involved. And it's really, it's really crazy. And now, my next-door neighbor got a temporary handicap tag, and they parked there because they said, "It's not my spot." Okay? And they told me that when I applied for it, that anybody can park there. And I, my sister lives in Illinois, she lives in an apartment complex, and she has a handicap spot, and it has her apartment number on it. She's the only one that can park there. And I know citywide, the ramifications for what I'm asking might sound like a lot, but I'm asking you to consider it on an individual basis, based on the density and the problem area where it's at, that you put my address on that sign, so that my plates are the only one that can park there. Because otherwise, it's just, it's nuts. And in the winter, I'm a fall risk, I have artificial hips, my knees are bad, and if I fall and dislocate my hips, they have to be surgically put back. And so it's not, it's not a joke. So the farther I walk in the winter, and if I trip and fall, it's still the same thing, even summer. So if I could just get the spot in front of my house and not have to fight with the whole city about who parks in the spot. Here's the other thing, and the consideration why I'm asking, the city, when I asked my landlord about putting a driveway in, I don't have a driveway. And he said the city won't allow him, when he asked for it, the city wouldn't allow him because of the telephone pole, and there were some other things, you know, distance from the corner, there were engineering concerns, you know, the driveway and all that. So they said no. And so this is why I'm asking for your consideration. So I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, John, for your comments. Do we have any other public input this evening? Seeing none here, do we have any virtual input?
We do not.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to action items, please.
Our first action item is Barry Lindahl's appointment to the Public Information Board of Iowa.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, and congratulate Barry.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Well, we just.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. We just wanted the mayor and city council to be aware that Senior Counsel Barry Lindahl has been reappointed to the Public Information Board for a term from May 2024 through April of 2028. And I think that an indication of the respect that people have for Barry from across the state.
Well, thank you, Mike. Well, and I will echo Ms. Russell in congratulating Senior Counsel Lindahl for this opportunity to continue again. I feel very, very fortunate to have Barry and Krena in such a strong office here in the city of Dubuque. I think it really is, it was very apparent to me very quickly, as a new council member and as mayor, to the importance that a good city attorney's office has in a city and the way we function. But to have the level of professionalism that is recognized in such a way across the state like this is kind of another echelon. So really appreciate Barry's work all these years and continuing work and service to the state of Iowa. Well, the motion here is to receive and file, congratulate Mr. Lindahl. Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. 7-0.
Second agenda item is request for ratification of Dubuque Police Protective Association July 1st, 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones. Move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Second by Jones and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Human Resources Officer Shelley Stickford is recommending city council ratify the city of Dubuque, Dubuque Police Protective Association, or DPPA, collective bargaining agreement to become effective on July 1st, 2024. This is a five-year agreement with a wage increase cost as follows. In fiscal year '25, 5%. Fiscal year '26, 5%. Fiscal year '27, 4%. And then in both fiscal year 2028 and 2029, there is a wage re-opener. In fiscal year '25, the number of steps is expanded for patrol officers and lieutenants, so that in that year, it is not an across-the-board 5% increase, but it is a cost of 5%. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, maybe you could tell our citizens about the process involved and how, you know, we've discussed this, because it's a very important thing, and there's been negotiations and those type of things. Is there a way we could tell the citizens how this, how we arrived at this and the process?
Sure. Shelley, I assume you're on the line. If you would, please step to the podium figuratively and respond to that, please.
Yes, just checking to make sure that I can be heard.
Yes.
Okay, this is Shelley Stickford. I'm the Chief Human Resources Officer. Collective bargaining is written for the statute under Iowa Code, Chapter 20. And so we followed the procedure therein for the contract that expires around June 30th for the DPPA. They were subject to a recertification election in October, and they survived the recertification election, began bargaining them late last fall. And there are certain topics, given that this particular contract is made up of greater than 30% to our public safety employees. We had eight or seven bargaining sessions scheduled after the initial exchange. The information with regard to wages, and perhaps what Councilmember Resnick is referring to, is information that was provided to us through a classification and compensation study, which made a recommendation that we expand the number of steps for our police officers for positions within scope for the CBA, and identified where there were gaps in competitiveness and where there weren't gaps in competitiveness, so that we could perhaps do a targeted increase as opposed to an across-the-board increase. Our management team, that was composed of Police Chief Jeremy Jensen, Assistant Chief Joe Mesrich, and Captain Jason Pace, and myself met in collaborative and caucus sessions with the president of the DPPA and his bargaining team, the president of DPPA is Kurt Rosenthal. We came to a tentative agreement nearing the end of February on all provisions that are required within Iowa Code, Chapter 20. And Lieutenant Fitzpatrick, excuse me, Lieutenant Rosenthal brought the tentative agreement to his membership, and they ratified by a unanimous vote on March 1st.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
This, again, thank you very much, Shelley. Once again, this is City Manager Mike Van Milligan. What I'd like to add to that information is that pretty consistently over the last three years, we've had over 15 vacancies in our police department. And the mayor and city council did prioritize employee recruitment and retention as one of their top 10 priorities this year in their August goal-setting. And as Shelley mentioned, we did a pay-in-class study to compare our competitiveness with other communities, and with the target of being at the 50th percentile of those communities, we did share that information with the DPPA, and then jointly arrived at these wage increases. Now, part of the collective bargaining process is, we're allowed to meet with the mayor and city council to review the information and to get direction. And this was consistent with the direction provided by the mayor and city council in those confidential sessions.
Great, thank you. A lot of great information for our citizens. Thank you very much for that. And I'm sure this is going to have broad citizen support. There's, we have some professional services here that they offer our citizens, some of the best around, some of the best anywhere. And so we really appreciate what they do for our citizens, keeping them safe. And this is a fair settlement that's been agreed to by all sides, so I intend to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I just wanted to emphasize what City Manager Van Milligan said regarding our goal-setting process and how this has led to priorities for us. I am very proud of our goal-setting process. I'm particularly proud that we have prioritized our people who work for our city, and this is an example of how we do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Well, I believe public safety is of the ultimate importance to our community and to every individual who lives here and works here. I think recruiting and retaining quality employees is important to public safety, and I think we need to be competitive in our wages. And tonight's earlier presentation shows how our community, our policing keeps our community safe in a caring and proactive and individualistic manner. And I believe they add to the quality of life and the safety of our community, and I plan to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
This is a very collaborative process and much appreciated. I want to thank the officers for greeting this proposal with enthusiasm and unanimously ratifying it. These are the same police officers that, four years ago, suffered some lost opportunities for increases due to COVID and our uncertainty whether we'd have funds available to pay people. It was a pretty scary economic time for everybody. But guess what? They came to work every day, did the job, explored things like we heard about a couple hours ago in this room, got better and better and better, and ultimately brought ideas to the table that Shelley reported to us in session a few weeks ago, that were good, were helpful, and we ended up with a contract that I expect to be the model for others in the city organization coming up. So congratulations to everybody, thank you. Let's get this ratified.
And Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber, yeah.
So I agree with everybody here, the comments made tonight, and I just wanted to reinforce the importance of public safety. And that, of course, is ultimately important to the residents here of the city. And then also, the fact that the quality of life is also important for everyone here, and just in support of the goals and priorities we set, and how important it is to support all the men and women of the police force. So I just wanted to express my appreciation as well and my gratitude.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like how the process came about. Mainly want to thank all of our city staff that worked on this. The fact that we've got, they've got wages that they know they're going to be receiving in the next couple of years, it keeps us competitive, it keeps our current enforcement officers with us. That may have been possibly thinking of jumping ship for some reason, so I'm very happy that we're going to pass this, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and it does sound that way, doesn't it, that we are going to pass this? I appreciate everyone's comments here, and, you know, a couple of them that I want to echo first. We did set police department full staffing as one of our top priorities, and we also, in a separate priority, was staffing, retention, and regroupment, as Mike pointed out and has been echoed here. And we mean it, and I hope that that is something that is, that we're able to see even more as we go through this budget process. But we mean it here, and I really appreciate the fact that we were in a very collaborative process with the Dubuque Police Protective Association. Yeah, there were a lot of meetings, and Shelley, thank you very much for your leadership in those, and thank you for being here with us tonight. And Mike, of course, thank you for your leadership too as city manager and walking us through this process. We did meet as a city council several times to talk about this, and we did, but not as often as Shelley met with the Police Protective Association and the officers there. And it's important that that process is collaborative. It's important that we have a process that, at the end of it, we can walk out and people feel that they're satisfied with what we've come up with as an agreement. And I think in this case, we did a good job of that, and I'm thankful that that's the case, because I really do think we're working hard as a city to try and find a way to make these goals that we set a reality. We do need to, as Ms. Wethel pointed out, we need to take care of the people who are taking care of the rest of the city. And it's really important that we do that, and I'm really glad that we have focused on that so much this year. I think it's been a really important step that we took, and I'm happy to see us moving in that direction and making it real here tonight. So with that, motion here is to receive and file, approve this agreement. Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is a video about Brian Porter, a seasonal employee in our City of Dubuque Parks Division.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Sprank. Eric, you'd roll the video, please.
Second semester of the 96-97 school year, he and his good friend went to the greenhouse and transplanted plants. He really liked it, so I asked about a volunteer job. Then I get a call from the city, and they said they were going to pay him. My name is Carol Porter, and this is our son, Brian. Brian has Down Syndrome.
My team goes out and beautifies the city. We take care of all the perennial beds and annual beds around the city. We try and give Brian some consistency in his job from day to day, but we also try and expose him to new things that we think that he would enjoy. So he will help me in the greenhouse. We've had him help plant this year.
It's been 24 years that he's been with the city. He enjoys the work because it makes him feel good. This is his job. He's the one that needs to get the majority of those pots ready to go for next year.
He loves to be in the greenhouse, even when it's hot, because he says it's good to sweat. And in the middle of the summer, 90-plus degrees, and pick up pots and clean up in the greenhouse.
It's been a wonderful experience. He's more talkative, more outgoing than he normally would be. I think it's good mentally for him, and to be active. Good occupational therapy. Right? Yeah. The other thing that Brian does with the city, he has a volunteer job.
The other thing that Brian does with the city, he has a volunteer job at the Carnegie Stout Library, and he started that in summer 2000. And he shreds paper and cuts paper for the computer terminals. Brian's a happy young man, and I want him to be motivated and on the go. He's got wonderful friends. He's just another one of the guys working at the Park Department. Brian's just like anybody else. He gets to know you, he likes to tease, don't you? You like to kid around with people, your workers? Yes.
Once he warms up to you, he is a ball of joy. I think he really appreciates life, I think he really appreciates everything more in life than most people.
Brian, how are you?
He's a fun person to be around. He makes you think about the world a little differently.
Well, Steve, I see you standing there. I didn't get a chance to recognize you before the video, my apologies.
Yeah, not a problem. Good evening, Steve Faisal, Parks Division Manager for the city. So, Brian is here tonight with his mom, Carol. This video always hits me, you know? So, as you might have heard in the video, this is his, going to be his 25th season with us as a temporary employee. Pretty amazing. He is an amazing individual. He does bring a lot of smiles when he works for us during the summer, so we're super thankful to have him, and we appreciate him and his mom, and thank you.
Yeah, Brian, now that you're famous, would you like to say a few words?
He's a fan of a few words.
It's okay, it's all right. And Carol, you're welcome to add a few yourself.
I will. I know most of, I probably have met most of yous when we come to the Employee Recognition Lunch. But anyway, you know, what a wonderful way to acknowledge Brian and the years of service he's put in so far, and we hope he has many more, and to think back how this started between Dubuque Community Schools and the city. He went to Jefferson Junior High School, and it was a vocational site, like I said, I was looking for a volunteer job. So, we had that collaboration between two entities of the city, and look what has happened year after year after year, except the two years for pandemic. But the library too, just a super bunch of people there, like at the Park Department, and Brian's got wonderful coworkers. Thank you for all that Steve does. Steve's our third park division manager we've dealt with over the years, and many of Brian's coworkers have retired, and there's been quite a few that have passed away, but the new ones have come in, and like I said, Brian gets treated with dignity and respect, and he just really, really enjoys it. So, I know I said this to some of yous at the Employee Recognition last year, you know, people with intellectual disabilities that are able to work are, once they're hired at their job and they know what they're doing, you've got a lifelong employee. They don't want to take vacations, they don't want to be sick. Brian used to go to All Breck Dakers or Camp Courageous before the city jobs started, and the first year he started at the city, he didn't want to go to camp anymore. So, what do you tell him about going to camp? He's retired from camp.
Retired.
Anymore. So, he loves working. The city job is a voluntary job at the library, and I, like I said, keep them motivated and active, it's very important, but seriously, think about that possibility. Yes, it takes extra support from coworkers, but it can work out, and that's the way, you know, we would really like to have our sons and daughters be able to be employed out in the community, to show the rest of the world, yes, look at the awareness that you're bringing here, and showing this video that people don't even know this is happening. So, it brings them out of their tunnel vision, and I said, get to know personally someone with an intellectual disability, and your world will be a better place. And the other thing, Thursday is 3/21, World Down Syndrome Day, and that's the time that it brings awareness to our community and the world of the challenges and the successes that families, caregivers, our service providers have in our country, and it's getting more difficult all the time to get funding and services, and we just keep advocating and advocating, and you can get there. Miracle League Baseball starts April 15th again. It's another plus to our guys and gals with intellectual disabilities, so if you ever got time on a Saturday morning, it's heartwarming and it's a lot of fun, isn't it, Brian? You want to tell them, what's your name at the ballgame? When you're announced to play, when it's your turn, what's your name? Brian the Bull Porter. That's his baseball name.
That's great. That is great.
So, I thank everybody, you know, in the Park Department, the library, all you city officials and all the things that we can do together. It takes a lot of people to get where we are with Brian today. He started with Keystone AEA at three weeks old, vital to their development, vital to get him to where they're at today, because I always say, if we didn't have Keystone way back when, he and his friends that he grew up together would not be doing what they do today. So, we appreciate everybody's help, and that's what we need to do, is help each other and make everybody be the best that they can be with lots of never-give-up attitude. And thank you so much.
Well, Carol, thank you so much for everything you just shared with us and for all the work that you've done for the years to advocate for Brian and a lot of other kids and families in this, yeah.
Now, we're advocating with the AEA issue.
Yeah, yeah, and we appreciate that. Yeah. And Brian, sincerely, from me as the mayor and the rest of the city council, thank you for your service to the city of Dubuque. I'm very, very happy that you've worked for the city for going on 25 years now and keeping this place so beautiful, so thank you.
It's 20 and 21 because of that darn pandemic.
Yeah, that's all right. We're still counting them, we're still counting them. Well, and now that I, now I know where you're working all the time, so every time I see one of those plants out there, I'll be thinking of you and all the folks you work with, so thank you very much for everything.
Tuesday afternoon, he's at the library.
At the library, that's, I'll think of there, too. I want to make sure I open it up if anybody has any other comments to share, but, yeah, yeah. Brian, so, let's give it up one more time for Brian the Bull Porter. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, too.
Yeah. Well, that was a fun video to watch, and since we watched that, that was our, that was our motion on the table here to receive and file and see that, so I'll take, Cory, if you could, call the roll, please.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Councilmember reports, I believe we are next, so do we have any reports? Actually, I'll start this time if you don't mind, because a good, a good lot of us here were able to join together in Washington DC this past week. I know we missed, we miss you terribly, Mr. Jones and Ms. Wethel. I know you would have been there had you, had you been able to, but it's understandable, we can't be everywhere at once. But we were able to get most of us there this year with a large group of staff to be able to advocate for what matters to the city of Dubuque and the entire Dubuque community. And I just want to be able to say publicly how much I appreciate the work that you did and the time that you've taken and that we all do on a regular basis to advocate for this city. Doing this job means making sure that we're speaking for the residents of Dubuque and for this entire community at the different levels of government, and I think, you know, we saw just tonight, in fact, some of the benefits of things like that, when we have major, major legislation that is able to provide huge benefits that are going to be generational for the residents that we serve here. So, the work that we do matters in those roles, and it's time-consuming, it's difficult. When you go to Washington DC and Terry Goodman is your leader, you will be tired, and I think that we learn that every single year, you need to buy the best shoes you can possibly own to be able to get around as quickly as she is able to get us there. So, and I also want to thank the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce and some business leaders who were able to join us as well on this trip. That voice was an incredibly important one, especially when it comes to air service. We talked a lot about air service on this trip and returning that, the federal government has a major role to play in that. And business leaders were able to speak to that from a different angle that I think was very useful this year, so we really appreciate all the time that everyone spent. But it was a, it was a good trip. I will mention, I was, I was there for another, another event just before for the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. You know, we are a part of a group of cities up and down the entire length of the Mississippi River, all the way from St. Paul to New Orleans, and it's a, it's a really important group that talks about one of our most important resources that we have here in Dubuque. Sometimes we tell the story of how we sort of remembered we lived right next to the river about a decade or so ago and realized that it was a place that we could, you know, really be able to cherish as a community, and, but along with that, we've had some really great opportunities. We've got more recreation, we've got more tourism coming, but just the, you know, the conservation alone and the amount of economics, economic development that occurs because of the river itself and where we are on it is incredibly important, so I'm glad that we're able to be a part of that and have a voice in that representation as well. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. On that same thing, I just want to say, first of all, it was a great trip, but I also want to mention a whole lot of unsolicited accolades from our partners about our new mayor, and he's been the Mississippi Group and so many of the other people. I want our citizens to know that he's, in just a short time, gotten a lot of respect from our partners, and he doesn't talk about it much, but I just want to let him know, I, we heard this constantly, what a great mayor, what a great advocate we have for Dubuque, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other thing I was wanting to talk to is the, quickly, that the gentleman who talked to us with public input, I just want to make sure you know that we can't address your specific issue tonight. I don't know what you were hoping for, but Mike or Mr. Mayor, would you be able to tell him next steps from here, what happens after our public input?
Well, I would, I would point out that anybody who gives public input, if it's not on the agenda, we are legally not able to talk about it, but what we can always do is reach back out to residents who provide public input. We can, we always have that option as a, as a city council, so that would be a likely next step for any one of us if we chose to, if we chose to do that. But aside from that, there's nothing else we can address about any specific issue provided during public input unless it's on the agenda itself. Thank you, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
So, one of the meetings and the conferences that were in between your Mississippi River and the chamber, of course, was the National League of Cities, and thank you for attending as well, and I, as well as yourself, were very happy to speak for the Dubuque residents during that timeframe for that conference, and in particular, I was very honored to attend three of the committee, very special committee meetings for advocacy for legislative opportunities for local municipalities and Dubuque in particular. And one was cybersecurity, the second was for the Technology ITC Committee, and then for the newly-formed AI Committee. So, I look forward to next steps with these committees, which now meet on a monthly basis in order to basically look at projects and opportunities for the city of Dubuque, and then, of course, the FCC Committee, which will be forthcoming beginning April. So, it was just a great conference. I am also extremely tired as we were attending all these meetings, and then I met with the NTIA, which is a branch of the FCC, not once, but not twice, but three times during the course of those few days as well, and they are now our newest best friends, and I think we have opened a lot of the doors for getting Internet for All and broadband for the city of Dubuque, so very, very productive and very happy to represent the city.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. And I'll just mention, your, your service to, on the NLC Committee and with the FCC is absolutely invaluable to the city of Dubuque, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome, my pleasure.
For taking that time.
And it's an honor.
All that extra time that you have, I don't know where you have it, but thank you so much for doing it. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Well, thank you. On, on another level, I was at the Iowa League of Cities' first-ever Local Leaders Day on May 6th, March 6th, and we had over 100 city council members, mayors, and administrators meeting to discuss things with our Iowa legislators, and what was really exciting was when someone saw my name badge and it said Dubuque on it, they had to run over and either tell me something that they were excited about, that they heard that we had done, or something that we had done that they are now going to try and do because what we did turned out so well. So, I just think it's kind of refreshing to hear those positive comments from outside the city. Sometimes you get kind of focused on the weeds, and it's nice to know that we have a great reputation out there, and I plan to attend that event again next year.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and thank you for your attendance there. Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also kind of echo a lot of what's been said, but also thank our city staff, the Chamber of Dubuque, and the citizens that allowed me the opportunity to go to DC and ask from our federal agencies and our federal partners for funding for projects that we want to do for grants. It definitely makes, makes, it made me realize how we fund a lot of our projects, but as well as this is our federal tax dollars and hopefully bringing it back to our community, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Jones.
A couple weeks ago, I was, had the honor of welcoming the Leadership Iowa Group to Dubuque, and interestingly, they were here to talk about healthcare, and so their, their welcome message was a little longer than, than perhaps they had planned, actually, they gave me quite a bit of time, but they got to learn a little bit about a police department that values emotional IQ for their officers and what that is and how that helps. They were able to, to hear, some of them for the first time, the term "brain health", they were able to understand about a Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award that a medium-sized city EMS system can, can achieve with paying attention to details in and out of hospitals. So, they got to learn a little bit about our EMS system, about all of our public safety systems, and for me, and then they got to spend some time with Mary Rose to learn about some of her other backstops, and then they were headed to Mercy and Medical Associates. So, I was, I was just lucky to be the guy there on Healthcare Day to have been there a little bit more than they bargained for. And I, there was a fellow from another Western Iowa city there who was, where apparently they'd been previously, and he was apologizing for something they did or didn't or weren't able to achieve, and I apologized to that city on behalf of the city of Dubuque on account of all the things that people were going to see today, that they were going to be disappointed that they didn't see pulse waves. So, it was, it was a great day, and it was, it was a great 15 minutes, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
Well, we've talked a lot about advocacy, and I'm so grateful everyone here is very much engaged in that. I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, we're going to Dubuque Night, sponsored by many partners in the community, including our Chamber of Commerce, to meet with and create relationships with our state legislature and our area members, especially as we look to advocate for you, our citizens of Dubuque. One thing I wanted to mention for everyone at home who wants to advocate, April 6th is at 9:00 AM at Diamond Joe Casino is the next Cracker Barrel, and I find these very much a unique opportunity where citizens can ask questions of our state legislators in person. If you do not see your representative there, I would encourage you to reach out to them and ask them to attend. Those are opportunities that are nonpartisan, and we are asking for people to show up and be present, and really, it's a, it's just a unique place to build community also with people who want to be active and have a voice, so I'd encourage anyone to be there April 6th at 9:00 AM.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, everyone. Well, we are not done working yet tonight, we have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
I move that city council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss purchase of sale of real estate.
Second, by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen Abramow. Cory, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Ms. Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. We are in closed session.